Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for Tuesday, May 27. We are going to enter right into Executive Session and return hopefully by 6:55. Come back into open session and we'll review the agenda at that time.
Right, and the purpose of the Executive Session is to discuss threatened litigation.
Okay. So, John, can you make a motion for entering into Executive?
You also, you have actually three items.
Yeah, I'll read them off. I move that the Board of Selectmen enter into Executive Session at 6:30 PM for the purposes, well, with Dick Gellman, our Town Council, for the purposes of discussing Garabedian claims, a discussion on the acquisition of real property, and Executive Session minutes approval. And we'll exit Executive Session to go into public session.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for Tuesday, May 27. I'll read the agenda. We have Chairman's Update, 6:55. Citizens Input at 7:00 PM. Topics Not Reasonably Anticipated by the Chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. 7:05, Bill Keegan, Finance Director, Contract. 7:15, Jack Othellet, Foxborough Cares. 7:30 PM, Attorney Frank Spillane, signage, Waxy O'Conners, which is being postponed. 7:45, Heather Harding, Conservation, Open Space Committee Formation. 8:15, Andrew Upton, Michael Brangwin, Trader Joe's New Officer, Director. 8:20, the Town Manager will give us a Town Manager's Report and the Town Manager's Goals and Objectives. Jim, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Chair, I just, with respect to the Finance Director's Contract, it was my misunderstanding that this was normal, has, usually has to be reviewed in Executive Session first before, I guess, presented in open session, so I, we didn't have that chance to do that. So I'm asking that we take that opportunity to do it at the next meeting.
Do that at the next agenda.
So postpone it.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Okay, just for a brief update, I wanted to again thank Mike Johns and all of his associates for the great job they did with the Memorial Day ceremonies yesterday. It was really great. Thanks very much, Mike. Despite the weather, we had a good turnout and it stopped raining just in time, so. Just for everybody's information, we're being visited by the Zip Trip this Friday, so if everybody can be down on the Common, they'll be there from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM and interviewing different folks from the town and look forward to it, so hope a lot of people show up.
You have a chance to get on TV.
Yeah. Jim, I want to ask, would you give us an update on the cleanup Foxborough?
Sure. Yeah, cleanup Foxborough, going back a year, A.J. Dooley and Jack Othellet put it together in a pretty quick order last year and then said they'd come back again this year and I want to guess between 300 and 400 people had gone. Courtesy of A.J. Dooley gave out shirts, set up the roots, and I know John was there and Dave showed up.
I did Walnut Street.
But no, it was very successful. The weather, it was pouring rain and it stopped right before and it was, you know, we saw all ages, all types of people out there. And, you know, my takeout from it was, you know, nobody wanted to show up on a Saturday morning to pick up other people's trash. People showed up for different reasons, but it was, it was a good group. So if you were there and you saw the businesses that donated, certainly A.J. Dooley, Jake and Joe's, the Kraft Group, take a minute and think about it and if you need services, you know, utilize those businesses because they're going to keep coming back and that's not why they do it, but certainly, you know, the community's a, it saved us a ton of money, that the place looks good. And I think there was less trash than last year because not that it was picked up, but I think people are thinking twice about just throwing their straws and paper out, so. Huge success and thanks to A.J., specifically A.J. and Jack Othellet for pulling it together.
Thanks, Jim. And David, did you want to give an update on the building project group?
Yeah, so we met last week for a follow-up meeting on Town Hall. We've decided that we're going to review the past space requirements and we're going to augment it. And the committee is really going to push towards identifying the true needs for the Town Hall employees and the space requirements for a replacement building in the Town Hall. We have a really good diversified group that is committed to making this thing happen. So we're on a, we're on a good path. It's going to be a lot of work, but we, I think we're going to get there.
Great. Thank you. Just really quickly also for our board, we talked about how we develop our agenda for each of our meetings and so what we're going to do is we've got a calendar laid out for the year of the regularly occurring items and we'll add items as they come to our attention. You know, the board will be submitting their requests for agenda items to Bill, Sandra, and me and then we will, with a brief description and the time needed to discuss those, so we'll insert them as the time allows and prioritize them based on request. So we also ask anyone from the public who'd like to have agenda items to please follow that same process, to contact Bill, Sandra Herman, and myself and we can get those in the queue. Okay. Being a little after 7 o'clock, anyone here for citizens input? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Give your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Donald Triani III. I live at 4 Rothschild Drive in Foxborough. You just ran that through with the agenda thing. We kind of didn't know the avenue to take, so we figured this was going to, a good kickoff point. So we, I'm here with my two neighbors, the Conohans and the McHughs, and my wife is also over there. So we live at Rothschild Drive, which if the board isn't familiar, is all the way down the end of Summer Street, heading towards Mansfield. It's the last street on the right before you get into Mansfield. It's a new road. The former residents of the Conohans' house, which is
One Roths.
One Rothschild, were the Bordalattis. They sold the property behind their house, which abuts the Amtrak tracks, to my father and I. We developed the property in 2005. My wife and I purchased the first lot. We built our home at 4 Rothschild, so we've been there since 2007. During the development process and the construction process of the road, and I don't know exactly who it was, but we were told by Amtrak, some representative, that a fence would be put up behind the house once people were living on the road. So along Summer Street, all the way from East Street and Sharon, fence runs on both sides of these tracks, the whole way. It stops on our side of the road approximately 500 to 1,000 feet up the street before heading down to the development, so. This fence on the opposite side, which is the Moore Street side too, as you know, high speed of Sella multiple times a day. We have trains going through over 100 miles per hour at times. And we are here tonight basically to get the ball rolling on trying to get a fence put up. I've tried to contact a few different people. Amtrak Police comes by a lot. We talked to them. Didn't really get anywhere with them, so we basically wanted to just bring, we drafted a letter we wanted to bring to the board. We have it sent to Senator Timolty already. He's putting that in the direction of where he needs to as far as state government goes. But we're just looking for support from the board. I'm not exactly sure what you guys can do, but we just wanted to bring it out there. So just a couple of quick things and then if you'd like, she can, Casey can read the letter if you want. It's very short. If not, we have copies for everybody and we can move along. So from my house, the tracks are about 150 feet from the back of my house. Their house is out in front of ours, they're about 300 feet, and the McHughs are even closer. They're in the cul-de-sac and they're about 100 feet. So by the end of this year, we're going to have six children under the age of five on the road and it's just, you know, I mean, like I said, it's wide open. You can walk right up there. Anybody can walk up there, so it's a, it's a huge safety issue right now for us.
John, am I understanding that you're looking for a fence?
Yeah.
Not a fence to be replaced with a sound barrier, but
No, we just, there's no barrier at all. You can walk right up, walk right onto the tracks.
Had there once been a fence there?
No.
Oh, okay.
For some reason, they ended the fence. It's right around '28 summer, I want to say. That's where the fence ended on our side of the road. Now, if you go down towards Mansfield a little further where it's Industrial Park there, it's tie trucking. There's a fence that fences off that whole area down there, but in a span of about 1,000 feet, there's no fence.
Now, I know you're talking to the maintenance guys, but have you looked on their website? Because I'm involved in a project right now and it was as simple as going on the website, making the formal application, and I got a response and they do require engineering, you know, air engineering to look at it.
Yeah. I know that we brought this subject, you know, I've been telling my father about it because he's still, the road is not fully accepted by the town yet. It still needs a top coat, so he still has some obligations on the road. He actually was in contact with somebody from Amtrak and requested, you know, we need a fence put up. And they basically told him we're not putting any fences up this year, is what they told him on the phone. So I, we didn't go the website route.
Yeah.
That's good to know, but
Yeah, I mean, it's just a website to get to the
Right.
But there is a formal
He contacted somebody that, from Amtrak Police. They said, "This is the guy you need to talk to," and he called him and basically told him we're not putting fences up, so that's why we're where we are now.
Can you provide your letter to our Town Manager and Bill?
Yeah, absolutely. We have copies, I think, for everybody.
Could you help look into some next steps? We'd appreciate that.
We can try and reach out to the, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. We can try and reach out to the Secretary of Transportation's Office and then also, Sella is really under, is really more of a federal issue, so it requires contact with a federal delegation as well.
Okay. So I'll have Casey read the letter for you, if that's all right, quickly.
Sure.
Is that mine?
That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So, "To whom it may concern, we are the three families living on a small cul-de-sac of Rothschild Drive in Foxborough, Massachusetts. The Mansfield train station is half a mile from our homes and thus the train tracks for the Providence to Boston commuter rail and high-speed Sella run along the back edge of our cul-de-sac and the backyards of our two homes. At the time of purchase, we were all told that a fence would be built as a protective measure to close off the train tracks from our properties. Having this fence is a matter of grave concern for all three families living on Rothschild Drive. Among our three families, there are currently four children, all under the age of four, and our families are still growing. Trains are commonly a source of interest and fascination for children and our kids are no exception as they almost always turn and notice when the trains race by. Additionally, one child in our neighborhood has a diagnosis of Autism Spectrum Disorder, ASD. Research from the American Academy of Pediatrics has shown that nearly half of, half of children with ASD attempt to wander or bolt from a safe, supervised place. More than half of these wandering children go missing, often into dangerous situations. Thus, the train tracks pose an immediate and real threat to safety for all of our children. The commuter rail passes 20 times per day during the work week and about 10 times per day on weekends. The high-speed Sella train, which does not stop in Mansfield, travels past our neighborhood at speeds close to 100 miles per hour several times a day. As we move into the spring and summer months, we as parents become increasingly vigilant but also concerned for the safety of our children as we spend more and more time outside. We are requesting with the firm insistence that a fence be installed along the stretch of tracks that are accessible from our neighborhood. For the safety of our children, the safety of our friends and family members' children, and for our peace of minds, we implore you to build that fence, a simple yet effective barrier to help us teach our children about and protect them from the dangers of the trains." Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah. Can I make a suggestion that you also send, you've dealt with Senator Timolty, may make a suggestion you contact Representative Barrow's office?
Okay.
The more people you have advocating for you, the better off you are.
Okay.
And also, and Bill, if you could do this, ask the Senator and the representative and Bill also from the town to contact Congressman Kennedy's office and also the two state, the two U.S. Senators, because the more people who know about your, your problem, your concerns, the more people will be had advocating for you.
I actually had Senator Timolty CC all of those people,
Yeah.
so they should all have a copy of the letter.
Okay. If we could follow up a copy from the Board of Selectmen also, if that's okay with the board?
That would be fine.
Okay. The squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is, we have an appointment with Jack Othellet for Foxborough Cares. Jack mentioned that he's unable to make it tonight, but Mike Johns will be standing in for him. Would you like to come forward? Hi, Mike.
Oh, you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, I'm filling in this evening for Jack Othellet. Big shoes to fill. And I'm here with Ms. Kelly Arkasha from the Art Department and for her students who are finalists in a, in an art contest to design a logo for the town. I don't always, in fact, I almost never speak from notes, but I think it's important because these are Jack's words and I don't want to mess them up, so I'm going to read "Foxborough Cares," as this is titled, and it is spelled the long way with a UGH on the end of Foxborough. "The town of Foxborough was born out of the sense of community, which since the beginning became a bond uniting friends and neighbors who, as caring people, created a caring community. Our sense of community is who we are, but as often as we may use or write the phrase, it would become more a part of it if that which we feel and believe and practice could be embraced by an image, an icon, if you will. So the countless acts of reaching out could be instantly identified as something that took root in a caring community. Who and what we are, as well as who we have been and can or will be, can be summarized in two words: Foxborough Cares." I took the Foxborough Cares concept to Kelly Arkasha, who directs the Art Department at Foxborough High School. She put me in touch with a very talented group of students who eagerly, eagerly embraced the challenge of designing a meaningful logo based on two words and a heart. It adds so much to have the students involved and I appreciate Kelly's willingness to facilitate their participation. Twelve designs were eventually reduced to four, which will be presented to you this evening. With your approval and selection of a design, this would enable anyone doing anything for others in this unique community to put a Foxborough Cares logo on, on it that speaks to the very core of who we are and what we are. And certainly, there are many among us who would be proud to wear a Foxborough Cares logo wherever we go. It wouldn't detract from the visibility of any organization or purpose for which a program was being conducted, but would simply identify it as being driven by people who care very much in this special place called Foxborough. I urge you favorable consideration of this opportunity because Foxborough cares."
Thank you. So, Mr. Othellet came to me a couple of weeks ago and he had seen some of the student work outside when he came to one of these meetings. And he approached me with this idea, this wonderful idea of taking the community and kind of branding the community, coming up with this logo idea of Foxborough Cares. So when we do, you know, cleanup Foxborough, when we have the Relay for Life that it has Foxborough Cares underneath it. So it's bringing the community together to support each other. We thought it was an awesome idea. We had him come in and he actually met with the students as his, as their client. He met with them and they went over the idea and took down notes. Again, they came up with 13 ideas and then he came back again and narrowed it down to four. So what they're presenting you with is four different options, if you do accept those four different options for an identity for Foxborough Cares. And all of them are original in their own. So I'll introduce the students. This is Molly Slimon. She's a junior. Lindsay Cuniff, who's also a junior. Christina Politano, who's a senior. Rachel McGlaughlin, who's also a junior. And Matt Mello behind me, who is a senior. And they are part of the Senior Inc. class, which is an advanced graphic design class here at Foxborough High School.
Great. All right. Let's have the unveiling.
So, as you guys can see on each of the presentation boards, they have a logo. Mr. Othellet has asked for us to do a logo against spelling Foxborough the long way, and then they did it in black and white, a color option, and then they thought about the branding where you would see it. So if you had banners during Relay for Life or if we had T-shirts or hats created.
Very nice.
Very cool.
All of them. We really have to pick one?
We can leave these with you. I mean, you can look them over.
They're really great.
Madam Chair, it's interesting, you could actually use all four.
Yeah.
I mean, they all have great
Graphics are great.
Graphics and messages associated with them.
Hmm. Oh, my. It's the hottest work we've had in a while.
I know.
So how do you want to do this? You want to digest it or do you want to, uh?
Well, what does the board think about the idea of all four?
I think, I think we need to pick one. I think if we're going to brand, I think if we have to brand the thought and brand so many different groups, if, I think it needs to be one, as much as, I mean, they're all very good.
It's hot as it is, huh?
Yeah.
And the five students work collaboratively together, so don't feel like you're going to hurt anybody's opinion.
Don't hurt anybody's feelings here. They're all worked out, I like to see that.
All right, well
Shall I start?
Go ahead.
I'd go with door number three.
Door number three? All right, Jim?
I actually like the second one. And the reason being, I think it's a little simpler, but the U with the heart in the middle, Foxborough stands out and the Cares, I like the different graphic, you know, one different from the other, the Foxborough and the Cares, it's simple. And I think it's catchy with the hands.
David?
I like number two as well. Number one would be a very close second. I like the idea of the helping hands. I think that sends a real clear message.
Jim?
I like number three. I like that the heart is very, very visible, so it, you know, brings the idea of caring. And I think the, the font would be different like on, on, on other, you know, printed material. I think the font would show up. I like number three. I like them all.
Yeah, I like them all. So I really like number two. I think it has a very strong message through the graphics. I think the graphics are really clear. So does that mean we have two and two? Two for number three, two for number two?
And three on number two.
Three on number two?
Three, two, looks like
You were the tiebreaker.
Number two. Yeah, let's go with number two.
All right? Sound good?
Number two. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Can I say something?
It's all, it's all great.
With respect to Kelly, I saw her in, in a group, different kids. Some of the kids were the same a couple of weeks ago at the
Same people.
Same people?
Uh-huh.
At the school committee. And what this group did was they went to the middle school and did the same type of thing, but put together math cards to, to help educate the, the middle school. And I got to say, and I'm a little partial because my daughter's a senior and graduating through the Art Department, but over the last couple of years, I've seen the Art Department in more places around town through the different groups that you put together and the different organizations. And it took, you know, Jack reaching out to you to say, "Can you help?" But it's phenomenal. I mean, the, the work that you guys do in-house, so to say, and bring it out to the community. And just a quick plug, I've been coaching Christina Fennau for seven years. And she's told me probably about six years ago she doesn't need a coach and I'm only good for carrying her earrings. To the point where she always heckles me. I broke an arm three years ago and one of the jokes that she did, and her parents called me up and said, "Please don't embarrass her in front of this whole group," so I'm on my best behavior, but good group, a good group of students.
You're pretty close.
I'm very close. And yes, I did not pick yours, but I do like number two better.
Yeah, they
Seriously, fantastic work you're doing throughout town.
They, they are awesome. This is an awesome group of, of students and they actually, before coming here, this past Thursday, they brought this in front of a professional graphic design studio to have them crit the work. So in the last couple of days, they've been doing touch-ups before the presentation, so I'm very proud of them.
Can, can we roll this out on, on Friday with Zip Trips?
Perfect.
Yeah, good. It'd be very good. About to talk to the producer, but
That's a great idea.
Yeah, those can be displayed.
Yeah.
Best publicity in the world.
Well, congratulations.
If I can just say, you know, it's interesting to me because I, and just, the last job I came from, there was, we created an arts district in town because the arts have become so popular these days that it's actually, it's all part of the creative economy. And we actually took an old school and turned it into an arts, an arts studio. And we rented it within two months. The entire building was rented out in two months because, because the arts have become so popular. It's a new creative economy that's being, that's emerging here. When you see stuff like this, it just makes me start to think about, you know, the possibilities that we could, we could actually do for the community. So it's great, great to see this. Really good, good stuff.
Well, congratulations, all of you.
Thank you.
Great job.
And we'll leave you with the boards and you can contact us with, and we'll give you all the files and information you need.
Great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so
You coaching the boss?
We're running a little bit early, ahead of schedule here, so our next item is the Open Space Committee Formation. Heather Harding in Conservation Commission. Yes, Frank?
Madam Chairman, may we borrow this for a minute and get a picture of the kids with it?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much. I'm going to bring it back.
Yep.
This is the one, right?
Yeah. We're going to need it for Friday, so be careful now.
All right. Excuse the interruption, all. Thank you.
Yeah. The font was pretty cool.
Oh, great, thank you.
So, good evening.
Hi.
Hi. So you're going to be presenting us with information about
Yeah.
the creation of a committee for implementing
Yeah.
the Open Space Plan.
Basically, we're here tonight for a couple of things. To let the board and the public know, not working. Goodness. To let the board and the public know what's going on with the Open Space Plan and the committee, as we've done in the past, and also to see if this board would publicly acknowledge the new individuals that have volunteered to be on the committee. Just briefly, as some of you already know, we started a committee back in 2009 to get our Open Space Plan written and submitted so that we could start applying for grants. Jane C.S. Pierce, the Conservation Agent, did fabulous job of pulling it all together, along with the entire committee. The plan was submitted initially in 2011 and approved by the State and DCS in 2013. I think February, right, Bob?
February.
And since that time, we've been able to successfully apply for over $300,000 in grant monies that the town has received. I'm actually not sure how much we totally applied for, but we've received over $300,000 to date. The Open Space Plan was completed before the master plan was drawn up, so it's been incorporated in the master plan and going forward, we'll be kind of sinking the two and making sure that everything appears in the appropriate place and not in both places. So now that our Open Space Plan is approved, the committee that planned it and drafted it and submitted it is sort of moving into now the Implementation Committee. So it's basically the same core committee, except sadly, we had three members of our committee pass away, but other than that, it's, it's the same group and the focus of this committee now becomes the implementation, updating, and making sure that the Open Space Plan is in sync with our master plan. in 2009, to get our open space plan written and submitted, so that we could start applying for grants. Jane C.S. Pierce, the conservation agent, did fabulous job of pulling it all together, along with the entire committee. The plan was submitted initially in 2011, and approved by the state and DCS in 2013. I think February, right, Bob?
February.
And since that time, we've been able to successfully apply for over $300,000 in grant monies, that the town has received. I'm actually not sure how much we totally applied for, but we've received over $300,000 to date. The open space plan was completed before the master plan was drawn up, so it's been incorporated in the master plan, and going forward, we'll be kind of sinking the two, and making sure that everything appears in the appropriate place, and not in both places. So now that our open space plan is approved, the committee that planned it, and drafted it, and submitted it, is sort of moving into now the implementation committee. So it's basically the same core committee, except sadly, we had three members of our committee pass away, but other than that, it's, it's the same group, and the focus of this committee now becomes the implementation, updating, and making sure that the open space plan is in sync with our master plan. So that's really what this group is gonna focus on going forward. We have members from conservation, recreation, zoning, AdCom, historical, and just citizens, that have stepped forward. We advertised it in the paper, held a meeting, people came, we talked about it. What we put in the plan is that, you know, this group is gonna be responsible for looking at the plan, meeting once or twice a year, making sure that any updates to the plan are in there, so that when it comes to 2018, and we need to resubmit the plan, we're not behind the eight ball, that we're, we're pretty much ready to go. There's no requirement by the state or DCS in the plan, that it's, that the BOS has to approve or appoint the committee, but we were asking that you would consider it, just because when people step forward and say, yeah, you know, I'll do the work, and I'm willing to do it, we thought it would be nice if they could be publicly acknowledged, and, you know, have people know. We also thought that by bringing it to the board, where this is televised, there might be other people that say, hey, I might be working to help, you know, willing to help out. They don't have to join the committee, the meetings will all be posted, there'll be public meetings, just like we've done all along. There is an open space recreation plan workbook, that is almost as thick as the open space and recreation plan, and it tells you exactly what you should do, and that's what we follow, and it tells you exactly who you should try to get on the committee, and that's what we've done. I did bring an updated copy, that I think Bill just handed out, of the people, because there were a couple people that said they submitted an application, but they never made it to us, but we were still able to get in touch with them. And there were a couple of people that were not 100% sure they were gonna be able to do it until after we had had that meeting. So, this list as it is now, is as up to date as we have. What I submitted to you guys was just a cover letter and the list. We have the applications in the conservation office. So that's kind of where we're at. So if there are any questions, or-
Bob, did you want to add anything?
The only, the only thing I'd add, is back in the comments, we have a letter from prior town manager, to the Conservation Commission, and it's just, I'll read it. "On behalf of the Board of Selectmen and myself, I would like to offer our enthusiastic congratulations to both the Conservation Commission, and to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee, for their efforts in producing Foxborough's Open Space and Recreation Plan, the OSRP. The plan provides a great deal of valuable data that will be extremely useful to town residents, boards, and committees. In addition, it will be an excellent reference for the planning board, as it begins to draft the town's master plan. The open space and recreation plan will be an effective tool for furthering Foxborough's efforts to protect its natural assets, and retain its semi-rural character. The selectmen and I look forward to the creation of an open space and recreation plan committee, which we're presenting to you tonight, who will be responsible for implementing the open space and recreation plan's recommendations, by developing strategies to protect, preserve, and utilize the town's natural resources. As you know, good stewardship of Foxborough's remaining open space is an issue of great importance to its residents. We appreciate your efforts in that regard, and applaud your success in completing Foxborough's 2011-18 Open Space and Recreation Plan." And it was signed by Kevin Stott.
Thank you. Gordon, would you like to add anything?
Just that, the planning board has been concerned about the stewardship of our open land. We were active during the open space planning. We have incorporated several elements of it into the master plan to date, and as we move forward, we want to encourage all the committees in town to work together to effectively utilize that which has been purchased over a period of years. Going back into the 70s, when I was on the advisory committee, we were very active in trying to put aside land for future utilization by the citizens. As we look forward to recreation, we've been working actively through the master plan program, with conservation and recreation, with regard to the Payson Road Recreation Center. And I would like to see that we ensure the trails and other features that permit the elderly, as well as our youth, to have a chance to effectively utilize that which we own. And that's the reason, I think, all the committees of the town should be working together, and that's why I have offered my time to, to whatever I can.
Thank you, Gordon. Would you like to give your name for the record, please?
Edie Erickson, 91 North Street.
And she's one of the newest members of the committee.
Been invited to join it.
Great. Thank you. Alright. So, would you like to start with questions? Jim, do you want to start?
Yeah, I, first of all, thank you. I know, from my understanding, you don't need to come in front of us for approval. This committee is set by the state guidelines, and there's no requirement for the selecting to approve it.
Right, right.
But we would like your backing.
Okay, great. I, I know eight or nine out of these 12 members, the, the members of the advisory, exemplary people, from all, all ranges of our society, or, or our community. So it's not all environmental people, there's business owners, there's recreation. My experience with this, and I, and I followed it from, you're right, it's, it's, it happened before the master plan came around, and the reason was, if we, one of the reasons was, if we come up to, with this committee, and meet the requirements, then we're able to get different grants. Then it was codified in the master plan, and when it started, it was, hopefully we can get some grants, and I, and I followed, we have been successful in grants. In my work, I'm, I'm working on one in Athol right now, and so if people think it's just to protect, you know, trees and wildlife, the grant that I'm working on right now, they just gave us $225,000 to do a river walk, in an old industrial area. So it's bringing in reading gardens, and, and paved walkways, so people can enjoy the outside. And I know, like at the Booth Playground, you're looking at redoing that parking lot-
Yep.
Getting some more spaces, and that is eligible for a park, P-A-R-C, park grant-
Right.
Which would bring in about $30,000 or $40,000. And we wouldn't be able to do it without this. So, I'm, I'm a little long-winded, but I, I couldn't say thank you enough for this.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. John?
Yeah, just, I, I read over your goals and objectives. Who's the author of this document?
The original committee. What happens is, back in 2009, a group, a committee got together, that's acknowledging the front of the plan.
Okay, so this has been around for some time?
Since 2009.
Okay.
And then you submit it to the state initially, the state gives you feedback. There's, there's a workbook, and, you know, the way they want it. So then you initially submit it. Once you initially submit it, even though it's not approved, you can begin to apply for grants, because you're partway there. They then write back and say, do a little more of this, we want a little more of this, change your goals, do this, do this. Goes back and forth, and finally, they approve your plan. Once it's approved, it's good for seven years. So this is the final version that the state approved, and it's just after a lot of back and forth, and all the committee members.
So the state has approved this?
Yes.
One other question, I'm, I'm not gonna say I'm not, not rusty, that's a double negative, on the Community Preservation Act, could you give me a bit of a primer? It seems like there's, that the adoption of that is in a number of spots in here, and why that's important to, to this committee.
You understand that much better than me.
Okay. Part of the Community Preservation Act is, it adds to your tax bill, and we've, a couple of times-
That's a good thing, right?
Yeah, obviously. We've tried to get it through a couple of times, but it's been very unsuccessful at Foxborough to date. But that would give funds for purchasing of more land, or, or of that nature. But it's, we've had troubles getting it through the town meeting.
But the adoption of the Community Preservation Act would be a separate warrant article? Is that how that would go?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Completely separate.
Because I didn't know if, if by adopting, or even approving this, that somehow we were granting the adoption of that act.
No, these, these are just goals that, you know, the states like you to have in there to work towards. There's no guarantee any of it's gonna happen. It's just kind of a list of what you'd like to tackle.
Okay.
Could I just add?
Judy, you want to come to the microphone?
Yes.
Can you come to the microphone, Judy?
Here, bring your chair and scoot here.
I'm Judy Johnson, I'm with the Conservation Commission. The Community Preservation Act, also, you get matching funds. So if the town adopts the Community Preservation Act, there are several, there, it can be 1%, 2%, 3%, but then, the, the, the state of Massachusetts actually gives money, a matching fund. So we're actually losing money by not having it in our town.
Mr., Madam Chair, I did the, it's also important to point out that, that the Community Preservation Act is not limited to just purchase of land, it's actually quite diverse. You can use it for recreation development, you can use it for building improvements, as long as they're, they're used for the community itself, you can, to, to preserve historic buildings.
Correct.
It's, it's pretty diverse, and it's used actually quite widely by a lot of communities around the Commonwealth. I, I just see, I just saw recently, too, that the Senate just recently added more money to that.
Thank you.
Which, there was about another $10 million that they put into the fund this year.
Correct.
I proposed, so it's, I think, that builds a conference committee at this point, but they did provide more funding for it, for this year. So, it's become very popular. It's been used by a number of cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth, to develop new facilities, to acquire land, to preserve that which, which is really important to various communities around the Commonwealth.
That, that's correct. The money actually has to be divided between environmental or open space issues, historic issues, and then also housing. So, there are, there are formulas for how much has to go into each pot, and then there's some leftover that can be used. And the money is actually, how the money is used is determined by a committee that is formed, and it is the townspeople that determine how the money will be used. They come forward to the committee and, with projects.
Okay. It's not a town vote?
Well, the town has to vote it in, and they vote in what level of taxation that they are willing to-
To implement it, but-
To implement it, yes.
I'm working, I'm, not to keep saying I'm working on a project, but over in Medway, there was a, a nice piece of land that was around a pond, and they're gonna sell it for 40B housing development. So, Medway, the town of Medway, has this plan.
Mm-hmm.
So they purchased it from the seller at fair market value. So rather than going to a developer, it went to the town, and they built a, just finished up a, kind of a community center, where you could have wedding, small christenings and things like that. But in order for that to get voted, it had to go to town meeting. So they said, alright, it's gonna be $3 million to renovate this old house with an addition, but the town meeting had to vote for-
Okay.
-the appropriation.
To accept the recommendation of the committee.
To accept the recommendation of the committee. So there's a couple, checks and balances along the way.
I believe, I believe that's correct.
Well, you know more than I do, at this point. I've, I've taken a couple of seminars, because I'm interested, but I appreciate the-
Some towns don't want it, because it's, you know, Uncle Sam taking my money when I sell my house, I have to give a percentage. Other communities like it, because a little bit from everybody can do some good things, so-
Absolutely. I've heard a lot of good stories. Preservation of historic buildings, archives, I mean, goes on and on.
One more question. What are chapter 61 sales, and does the town presently have 120-day right of first refusal on those sales? Is that in place today?
It's under my, it's my understanding we do, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's state.
Yes, it's a state.
What's a chapter one?
Chapter 61, they are, they're, 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 they're transfer of development rights, so what is, it's-
If it's a farm, if, if you've got land-
It's a farm.
That, you get a tax break, because it's farmland. If you want to sell your farm, the town has 120 days to purchase it at that fair market value-
Correct.
-before it goes to a developer. So I think what this committee would do, was just knock on our door, and say, hey, this is an opportunity, don't let it pass.
Right.
Because there's nobody from the state that's gonna say, hey, they're gonna sell it, you guys get to do something.
Yeah, and I mean, we would have to also have the funding to purchase something like that.
Right. And if, if it does get sold for use other than open space, then all the money has to be refunded back to the, to the town.
Yep.
I was looking, I think the list of them is in here somewhere, but there aren't, there aren't that, yeah, it's a, it is in, into here currently, under the inventory of lands. So, but this, this committee that's been working on the plan and going forward, isn't gonna have any type of authority or anything to do that. Their goal would just be to realize this is happening, and then alert the appropriate-
No, no, I just, I just didn't know what that chapter 61 was.
Okay. You all set, John?
Yep.
David?
I read through the plan, and it's actually pretty impressive. Now, is this, is this gonna be updated periodically within the seven years, or do you have to wait the seven years?
Yes. You only resubmit it to the state every seven years, but what you do in the meantime, is we have like a folder already, updates. Because, for example, Payson Road is night and day. Now that we have a master plan, some of the stuff that we had to include in here, because it was nor else to put it really best fits in the master plan, so we just, that's the point of the committee, so that seven years from now, we're not scrambling. You know, we'll meet once, twice a year, to kind of go through and say, do we have all the updates, so that we're ready to go in 2018?
Now, have, have you gotten to the point where you're ready to start implementing programs from this, or it's still a work in progress?
Somewhat, it's still a work in progress, yes.
We, we have implemented some things. There are some educational things that we have done. We have a Vernal Pool workshop-
Yep.
-every year, for the town, advertise it, so.
Have you identified areas for community gardens? Or, I read in there about the farmer's market, and possibly having a farmer's market on the common?
Yeah, no, we have not gotten to that point yet. We're just at the beginning stages of figuring out who in the committee would kind of be willing to tackle what.
We need people.
Yeah.
The question of farmer's markets has been extensively covered in the master plan, with several possible locations identified, et cetera. So that really is almost separate from this. Related, but separate.
And we did, as mentioned, several things that we had in this, really belong in the master plan, so as soon as they get into the master plan, we can delete them from ours, so it's, so we're not having-
So there is some overlap?
Oh, yeah. Right now, there is, yes, there's a lot of overlap.
Overlap, but coordinated.
Coordinated overlap.
We, the Conservation Commission, Recreation, and Planning have been working extensively on a lot of areas, witness where we stand, on Payson Road at this point. We're ready, hopefully, to get open bids on the 3rd of June, for some substantial upgrades at Payson Road, so when the bids come in at the right price. But, we have been working together, we'll continue to work together.
You all set? Jenny? Yeah, so this is strictly an advisory committee? This is, this committee has actually no real authority to push through in any programs. And I was also wondering about the makeup of the committee. I mean, when I went through the list of collabor, what they call collaborators, and-
Advisors.
Advisors and collaborators. You listed, you know, you had the different columns, and in the first column, a lot of it was the OSPC, the Open Space Recreation Committee. And then you'd had, you had the advisors. So I was wondering, why is the committee makeup not made up of all, a member of all the committees that would be the advisors? You know, I'm thinking, you know, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Recreation Commission, Board of Health-
It is.
You know, well, I know, I know it is, but then there's also, you have, if my addition is correct, you have four, two, three. On, on the main committee, you have four boards or committees, members from boards or committees, and then the other five are volunteers.
Correct.
So, my, my concern is that you've got more volunteers than you have members of elected boards or commissions. And I have no problem with this, if this is strictly an advisory committee.
It is.
But I would not, I would be rather hesitant to agree to this, these members. If the volunteers can override the elected members or commission, that, that, that's my concern, because I really would like to see this as an advisory committee, and not a committee that has any, really, any authority.
Well, they don't.
No, it's, it's-
It's strictly an advisory committee.
Right.
Right. Basically, what we did was, we advertised it, as we have been since 2009, and everybody that stepped forward, and has been coming to the meetings, and expressed an interest in getting involved, we put on the committee. We did, in addition, reach out to some key people, and asked them over and over, until they agreed, to be on the committee. But the Open Space and Recreation Plan Workbook tells you, ideally, who you should have on the committee, and I think they recommend five people from the community. Basically, we have what they want on there.
Okay. Well, if you're gonna add volunteers, there was an application from Michael Kelleher, that's right in our, right in our packet, who, and I know a few weeks ago, he applied for it. So I would advise, I would like us to put Mr. Kelleher also on the committee?
I don't know. He, did he reach out to you?
No.
He didn't reach out to us, we didn't get- He didn't reach out to us. We didn't get an application from him, and he's never come to-
It's right here.
That, but we didn't get that.
I looked at that. There's no timestamp, there's no, it didn't go to you guys.
I didn't submit to you the applications we received.
Well, it did go-
The only clarification I'd like to make is, because it's a Board of Selectmen that are appointing or acknowledging this committee, the public is going to see your process for appointment to the committee being applying to the Board of Selectmen. So there is clearly, or has been, a confusion. I know that I did not apply to this committee. I've attended a lot of the sessions, but because the procedure for appointment to committees within the community that are not specifically covered by other bylaws is through the Board of Selectmen, so anyone interested would have applied to the Board of Selectmen and not to any specific committee.
Okay. Well, there are no timestamps on any of these, these three, the four. So there's Michael Kelleher, Gordon Green, Judy Johnson, and Edie Erickson. And Mr. Kelleher had, he's interested in the following town committees: Conservation, Open Space Recreation. So he's expressed interest in the Open Space Rec, he's expressed interest in Conservation, and also the Open Space. So I would ask you to please include Mr. Kelleher in the Open Space Recreation, if you're looking for volunteers.
I think you, you can act, the board can actually do that, because it's your, it's your committee.
Right. Well, I would like to propose Mr. Kelleher to addition to the committee.
I just was, I don't, we've never seen that, so I'm just not sure when he submitted it. To the best of my knowledge, he's never come to the meetings, but if he's still interested-
Does it have any kind of date on it? Could it be five years old?
No.
Okay. I know some things have said in the Selectmen's office.
No, this, this was, no, this was, this was done recently.
Okay.
I mean, within the time, within the timeframe, I believe it was done before Mr. Green's application.
Okay.
We're also hoping that, just by virtue of being here and the fact that we're putting it in the paper and posting the meetings, that people that don't necessarily want to join the committee, but will come to the meetings just to be involved.
Well, Mr. Kelleher wanted to join the committee.
Yeah.
Bill, would you like to comment?
I just like to, just to summarize a couple of thoughts here. I spent some time over the past two weeks. I know this item was on the agenda last meeting for the board, and I asked it to be held for two weeks so that I could actually investigate further. And I did meet with Heather and other members to find out more about the process here and how this, how this actually took place. As I read the plan, the plan was actually developed under the normal process of, of the Open Space Recreation Plan. The planning board was involved to a degree, but I know that other people were more active than others in the development of that. And I think it actually went through two planners, not just one.
We were strictly, we were in a supportive role.
It involved it from two different planners over time. So it looked like that, if I read it correctly, that the plan is actually a year, you're actually a year behind in terms of where you should be at this point in time, in terms of appointing the committee and getting it going.
Right.
The committee itself, as I understand it, I think there was some confusion, because it wasn't really clear as to what the, what the role of the Open Space Recreation Implementation Committee is. So I think for clarifying, for, I think for the board's attention tonight, is that their role is to help the various boards and committees use the plan and help them get through the plan and implement the various recommendations to the extent that they can. They have, you have no real role in that, other than to just advise and provide information to them and how they can recommend these things to get done. You have the history, perhaps, some of you have more of the history about how this plan was developed, but it is true, that is, it is an important document for, for making the town eligible for grant, grant conditions, and that's something that the state absolutely requires. So I just think it would be helpful for the board to hear from you as to really what the role, clarify what the role is, so that they clearly understand what they're, what you're asking them to do.
Of the committee?
Yes.
Okay. So if you look at our seven-year plan, it kind of goes through, you know, from, from forming the committee. So pretty much, the committee's going to work in a supporting role with whatever boards or other committees need to use this Open Space Plan. Part of it could be as simple as the research, because we're all volunteers and there's only so much time. So if something comes up, you know, one of the committee members could say, yes, I'll go research it, or I'll go get an update on what's going on from the Planning Board at Pace and then report back. And that's really all it's going to be, is just support to the different boards that are involved in this. And that's why a lot of the collaborators and stuff are not the committee. It's Recreation, Conservation, you know, Board of Health, Planning Board, because the boards are actually the ones that have to do the actions. The Implementation Committee is simply going to say, hey, we found out that, you know, we could put a great trail in here, and there could be a grant, and what do you think about this, and go to the right board. Or, hey, there's a problem with this. Well, that involves Board of Health. Okay, alert the Board of Health. Whatever department handles it is going to have to deal with the issue or the concern of the project. But the goal of the committee is just to try to get as many people involved to know what the goals of the plan are and to help us facilitate getting them done as a town. The committee's not going to attempt to do them on their own.
Great. Thank you.
Is that clear? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and just, if you, the Board of Selectmen apparently received a letter, although the Board of Selectmen did not receive the letter. A letter was submitted to Town Hall from Mr. Kelleher, listing his desire to be, and this was on April 12th, listing his desire to be considered as a member of the Conservation Commission because of his schooling and his background. He's a, you know, lifelong Foxborough resident, but he's taking courses. And it was a very impressive letter. I mean, this person would be a really good asset for the, for the Conservation Commission. When we, when, on the 29th, I believe it was the 29th of April, we were given a list of reappointments. And from the Conservation Commission, we were given two names, Valerie Marshall and Eric Nelson. Actually, there was a third name, Mr. Kelleher, who was not, we didn't, and I didn't know about this on the 29th. And then it was brought to my attention that this man had applied for consideration of the Conservation Commission. And in my mind, his, his letter is excellent. He's an excellent candidate. I thought his name should have been brought forward for one of the two positions on, on the Conservation Commission. When it was brought to my attention, I said, you know what? What you should do is go, at first, I said, have you ever been contacted by the town in regard to your letter? He said, no. He had submitted it to the town. And the Board of Select, it was addressed to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen never got the letter, it was never in our packet. So I told him, I said, why don't you go downtown, go to Town Hall right now, and you apply, make an application. Well, he had never been contacted by the town to be told that he had to make out an application. I said, why don't you go down to the Town Hall, make out an application for the Conservation Commission, and make an application out for the Open Space Recreation Committee, so you could be considered, because you have excellent credentials. You would be an asset to either of those, either of those committees. And so now, that's why I'm asking that we appoint Mr. Kelleher to at least the Open Space, we've already appointed the Conservation, so at least give this man a chance to be on the Open Space Committee. That's all I'm asking.
One question. Are there defined terms for this committee? In other words, is it three-year terms, and then it's like a third goes out in three years, and a third is two years? These are-
There's, there's no requirement. In fact, all of us have simply been doing it since 2009. There's no requirement.
But there's no, no rotation, no, no new people coming in, people getting out, nothing like that?
Only, if people want to join, they're more than welcome. If anybody wants to join the Conservation Commission, Mr. Kelleher, I've never seen him, he's never been to any of our meetings. I have never received any notice that he wanted to be on the commission. The two names that you mentioned were reappointments to the committee, but I had no, no knowledge. Things that get to the Selectmen's office don't necessarily get down to the Conservation-
Right. And that's one of my concerns, too, because if I had known there was a third, a third person, a third candidate, if I had, if I had that letter in my hand, I would have said, hey, wait a minute, there's a third candidate.
Where did it come from?
I don't, I don't know. That's, that's something we have to, we have to find out.
I can't answer that one either, so I apologize.
But that's why, in consideration of Mr. Kelleher, I'd like him to be appointed to the-
I have no objection to anyone being on the committee. He's more than welcome, so.
Yeah, we didn't exclude anyone. Anyone who expressed any interest in being on the committee, we put on the committee. And as I said before, our hope is that even if people aren't willing or don't want to be on the committee, that they'll at least show up at the meeting and maybe pitch in here and there. You don't have to formally be on a committee to volunteer. I'm not on the Conservation Board, but I volunteer. I, you know, so we're just hoping that if we can get the word out, people will say, well, I can't commit, but yeah, I'll help you do this, or whatever. The more the merrier. I mean, we can help and get-
Here's a prime example. Edie came to one of our meetings, and we gave her a book and said, you're on the committee.
And I agree, because Edie's, because Edie's retired, Edie's retired now, and she is a member of the Lane family.
Yes.
And it's, and she's a very, and she will be a wonderful asset to your committee.
And so she, she showed up, we got her. I mean, Mr. Kelleher unfortunately has not been to any of our meetings, so I haven't been able to nab him, okay?
Well, he's, he's applied.
All right.
Can I make a couple of comments? So again, thank you. I know that this plan has been worked on for a really long time, and, and it read very well. A lot of detail. The area that, you know, I looked at most closely really was from a master plan perspective, ensuring that this plan, as it stands now, dovetails into our current master plan, I think is critical. And so as I was trying to think through, you know, how best to have a review with all of the boards that are impacted by this, so Water and Sewer, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Board of Selectmen, Recreation Committee, I think those should be like the core individuals on the board, on this committee, and then have additional residents from the town with special interest in, in the plan. And what I really would like to see would be, as a first step, for this committee to, as they organize, to have each of those delegates from each of those elected boards to go back to their respective boards, have a full review of the plan, and then circle back to your group, and ultimately circle back to us with any suggestions, changes, updates. Again, with the idea of the master plan being what is really a huge guiding force here, which wasn't in existence when this, when this was first developed. So I think it's really just, you know, I want to make sure that they dovetail appropriately. Bill, did you want to say something?
Hi, Bill Greed at 15 Berchley Road. As Heather said, the plan was done before the master plan started. And now that we've started the process, and we've, we got a lot of buy-in from all of the boards, in the process of doing the master plan, we had to stick our nose under other boards' tents. And, and eventually, that was a welcomed occurrence. And I think this is a great opportunity to tweak this plan, if it helps stimulate conversation between the boards, so that the master plan, because it is a working document, can be tweaked. The more dialogue is, the better. And, and it's a great start. This plan was instrumental in us completing the master plan. The worst thing you can hear is from Beacon Hill saying, we're here to help you. So they helped us with the master plan and said we had to have an open space section. When they went to do the original open space section, they said you had to, you had to have some zoning stuff in there. So I know it's unusual that Beacon Hill will give conflicting direction to groups, but by God, I think they did again. So it's a great idea to, if nothing else, force boards to talk with each other and, and make sure that Board A is, is working along with Board B. And it's, we look forward to the opportunity to tweak all that and continue to make Foxborough a place that we're all proud of.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Does anyone else on the board, I'd just like to hear your thoughts on the idea of having individuals from each of these affected boards as part of this group?
My thought, and it's been advertised, and it's been discussed for years now, if you're going to grab people kicking, screaming to come onto the board when they've had the opportunity, you know, I put in the category right now of no good deeds goes unpunished. We've got volunteers that have been working on this for a number of years. If we complicate it too much, I think that's a bad thing. I've worked with these in other towns, and the work that you guys are doing are head and shoulders above what I've seen in other towns. I think we need to stop going into in-depth and complicating it. If certainly you start working and you need to reach out to people that have said no before to Water and Sewer, pull them in. But we've got nine people here and three people that have gone through the process. It's not the board to make recommendations. This letter is a request from the Rec Department and the Conservation Commission. You've vetted it out, you're bringing us recommendations. I'm ready for a motion to approve this list and move forward. It's been a long time.
Yeah, the, I asked the question before, that there was no terms on these. It's sort of a lifetime appointment. The other thing I wanted to know is, is there a finite amount of people that can be on the committee? In other words, are you elastic? Can you, can you take in other people?
Yes. They give you a recommendation, which is what we went with. And our hope is that although you have a core committee, that you'll get, God, if we get 100 volunteers, that'd be amazing. But they kind of recommend a core committee, which is what we have here. What you also do in addition is whenever you do something and it's included in the plan, you send it out to every board and committee in town and give them 30 days to give you any feedback. And then if they don't, you kind of arrest them.
I think that's where Lorraine's going, is how does one become a part of the core committee?
Well, this core committee, we advertised it, and we reached out, and we begged and pleaded, and these are the people that said, yes, I'd be happy to do it.
Oh, I know, that was initially, but I think, if I correct me if I'm wrong, but you said that you would like the, the Board of Selectmen to be the appointing authority.
No, no, no. We requested it. The state does not require it.
No, no, you requested, right.
We would like-
We request backing from the Selectmen. You don't have to appoint.
You don't have to, right.
We just want your support. And one of the main reasons why we're here tonight is to get it out to the entire public and get some more interest. We'd love to have more people involved in it. We're not, we're not trying to be exclusive. We want to be broad.
If we said no, you would go and do your own thing, and you would move along like you never even came here.
Exactly, exactly.
Why not give them the recognition-
Right.
And the, the support-
Right.
To move forward and say thank you, rather than-
Just like we've done in the past. We come in front of the board just to say, this is what we're doing. Any feedback, any support, any, anything you have to offer would be great, and then we go on our way.
Just, Jim gave me the answer, but so the people at home know, this is not a bylaw committee, this is an ad hoc committee.
No, it's just correct.
Advisory.
We have, is strictly advisory, no rulemaking or anything like that. So that's, if, if we were a rulemaking, such as a Conservation Commission, then you, as the board, would appoint us. But this board that we're talking about tonight, strictly advisory, we would love your backing. Without it, we'd still-
Do what we're doing.
-chug along anyway.
No, I was just wondering, you know, how, how can one become a member of the core committee?
Show up.
Say someone has outstanding credentials.
Show up.
And keep showing up and keep showing up.
Keep showing up.
Once, I mean, that's all it took for Edie, so.
Wait a minute.
So I think, I think to sort of put a wrap around this discussion here, is that, to be clear, that the committee was looking just for an endorsement of the concept of a committee, to, to be an advisory committee to help implement the, the process. Maybe that was 100% clear, and I'm glad we clarified that. And then the second part of it is that, that even the list that you see tonight is not the final list, essentially, because it could be, it could be much broader than that. You could have more people on there.
Right.
In fact, I think as we talked, we added, we added a couple of members-
We did, yeah.
During the conversation. So the concept of having the gentleman that you mentioned could easily be on that committee.
Okay, I'd like to put him on and have his, the, his information that you can contact him, so that he'll be able to-
Sure.
If you could get us a copy of that, we'd appreciate it.
I know, Mike. I mean, that's easy. I know him.
So, so having said that, I think, you know, all your, your issues can be addressed here, if we, if we just, you know.
So I'd just like to suggest we reach out to the Water and Sewer Commissioners and-
Sure. I can do that.
I think everyone else is already accounted for, right? Planning Board is here, Recreation, Conservation Commission. If there's a member of our board who would like to volunteer.
I wouldn't recommend it.
No.
Because eventually, whatever their recommendation is going to come in front of us, and we're taking, I'd rather have a member not, be honest with you, it gets too political. I'd rather have it independent. And if you've guys got recommendations of the committee, you bring it to us, and we look at it independently and not, not being on the committee.
And I would like to look at the process of committee assignments and committee recommendations and, you know, just, because obviously, there's, there's communicate, there's a lack of communication and, you know, it's some, an application may be in a file, but- some, an application may be in a file, but obviously, it's not getting, it's not going to the right place, you know? And they're not, if people apply by letter and if they're supposed to make out a form, they're not being advised by that by the, by Town Hall. So, I'd like to go through, you know, review the process of committees.
I think that's a breakdown at Town Hall, not the committee.
Right, right. Yeah, I think...
Must be Bill's fault.
It's all my fault.
No, no, no. I would expect...
Well, blame the other guy. He went out the door with them.
No, no. No, I would expect that any committee, any committee who's beginning the reappointment process would go to Town Hall and say, "Is there anything in the file?" That letter was delivered to Town Hall on April 12th. Nobody knows anything about it, you know? And the committee assignments, the committees were reappointed on April 29th.
Can I just ask, does everybody agree with Jim that there should not be a member of the board on this?
Yeah, I can, I agree with Jim.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, if we, we'll have someone from Planning, someone from Concom, Water and Sewer Commission.
If you can get somebody from Water and Sewer.
I'll reach out to them. I'll reach out to them. I'll do that.
Recreation and then the members of the community who've come forward.
I think the key point is that if everybody embraces the plan, it's more likely going to be successful. And that's really the whole goal here. Is that accurate?
Yes, yes. More involvement, the better.
Yeah.
So, maybe after it's been reviewed by the elected boards at some point, could you circle back to us and bring us an update?
Sure.
On that? That'd be great. Appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
How would you structure a motion on this?
I think the motion would be that the board appreciates the work of the committee and that they support the creation of a committee, implementation committee. And don't add names because the names could fluctuate, going to fluctuate.
Right.
That's what we're looking for.
That's all we're looking for.
Just support from the board.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to, for the Board of Selectmen to support the appointment of a committee by the Conservation Commission and Recreation Department to the open space recreation plan in the form of an implementation committee. With all support.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Next item is Andrew Upton, Michael Brangwin, Trader Joe's new officer and director. Michael, introduce yourself, please.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
There you go, Michael.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Andrew Upton, representing Trader Joe's. Today, we are seeking approval of a change in the corporate office. There's a new president. The current president will stay on as the CEO and a member of the Board of Directors. This is a technical change that is required by the ABCC. We have to do it for every town that we have a liquor license in and it implicates no changes whatsoever in the floor plan, the hours, the management, or any aspect of the store here. It's just a corporate housekeeping measure that's required by the ABCC. That being said, I am glad to answer any questions. May I?
No, I saw that. Actually, I was somewhat surprised that it had to, if you were going to do something on the corporate level, that we had to know about it. But glad that you're here and to let us know.
So, the new manager will be David Ford, is that correct? Or...
No, there will be no, there's no new manager.
No man.
He's already approved by this board as the manager. So, there's no change to any aspect of the store.
Gotcha. Thank you.
At the headquarters in Boston, one gentleman in a suit will be replacing another.
Thanks for that description.
Any questions?
No.
Entertain a motion?
Do you want to do it, Jim?
I move that we approve the, what do we approve?
Change of officer.
Thank you. The change of officer for Trader Joe's East Incorporated, per the application provided to the Board of Selectmen.
A second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Have a great night.
All right. We're only five minutes behind. So, next item is the town manager. Bill is going to give us a town manager report and also talk about goals and objectives for the upcoming year.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. The board has the goals and objectives in your package this evening. All right, so I'll get to those momentarily. Just a couple of updates on what's been going on. Past few weeks, I've been, past week, I've been doing a number, working on a number of different things, but just want to take a note and again, appreciate the work of the Veteran Service Committee as well as Mike Johns, the Veteran Service Officer, for the work for Memorial Day and to thank the Chair and all the other speakers that were there at that event. I have to tell you, that was about as Americana as it gets. And I think I said that the other day when I saw that. It was, it was great to see the town band and everybody on the common, you know, a lot of places don't have a common, you know? So, it's really nice to see that and to make use of it in such a way that really, really brings home what's important to this community. So, it's great to see that. Tomorrow, I'll be at the IGO School with other representatives, accepting a grant with the school committee and school superintendent for the IGO Elementary School for the Play 60 NFL program. That's going to be presented tomorrow morning at 9:15, 9:30. My understanding is that Mr. Kraft and members of the Patriots Organization will be there to help, to present this $30,000 grant for the redevelopment of a playground at the IGO School.
Nice.
So, my thing is that there are 14 such grants being distributed around the country and Foxborough is one of those communities. So, congratulations to those who applied for that grant.
Now, since you mentioned it, is it open to the public? Where it's an elementary school during the day? People allowed to go?
You know, I do have the, it is a press release that I have, that I received.
So, when you say Mr. Kraft and the players, I'm just wondering if people are going to...
It's an all-school assembly, so I'm not sure it'll be actually open to the...
Yeah, they'll, they'll...
Just the school itself. All right, so it'll be somewhat limited, but, you know, I'm sure the media will be covering it, so. But I just want to make sure the board was aware of that so that they, so we can actually just note that for the record. The, this past week, I did a tour of the Prox and Recreation facilities around town, which, and actually, I was very impressed by what you actually have for facilities and what's being still developed in terms of active recreational use of fields around the town. So, it's great to see the new field development as well as the current field that's in use and all the facilities that are going along with that. So, it's actually, it's more than I've seen in many other communities, so I think it's great that we have that because it just adds to the quality of life of the overall quality of the community to have that kind of, those kind of facilities available. I met, I've been meeting with the fire, I'm going to be meeting with the fire department personnel all this week. I've met with one of the shifts this morning. I've got another one scheduled, I believe, for tomorrow and then, actually, on Thursday and Friday, and I think one next week. So, I'll be meeting with all four shifts to meet with those, to meet with the fellows over there and ladies. And then there is a Council on Aging Men's Cookout on Thursday. I'll be attending that as well at 12:30. And again, the Zip Trip is on Friday on the Common. I actually witnessed and was part of this last year in Dedham, so it's a great event. And if, I encourage the public to come out and see this because they bring a number of different vendors. If anybody likes ice cream, they usually bring a nice ice cream vendor. It's all free, so people can come and really enjoy it. It's really, it's a great thing. And of course, Fox 25 will be here and it'll be a live telecast right from, right from the Common. So, if you've never seen it, I encourage you to come out.
Bill, what are the hours of that? Is it...
They start at, I believe they, they're going to be there early. They were there about 4:30, 5 o'clock setting up. And then they start the broadcast, I believe, at 7:00, if I'm not mistaken. And they go all the way till 9:30, 10 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. So, but it takes up the whole morning, essentially, you know? So, it's just a great, it's a great, great thing. And then on Saturday, I'll be at the, reviewing the concert operations and safety operations at Gillette and on Saturday evening from 4:00 to 7:00, just to see how an actual concert is operated under the operations of both the fire and police and state police and all the different safety groups. And last but not least, I just wanted to announce that the first Ask Bill Keegan show was taped this past week and will be broadcast Friday at 6:30, 6:30 PM, and again, over the weekend and again on Monday evening. So, my first show, talked a little, just a little bit about my background and sort of introductory, but the next one will be more of a case where people will be able to email in questions and ask just general questions about the town. I'll be able to circulate that to all the various department operations and then provide answers for the next broadcast is how that works.
Is that the name of the show? Ask the Manager?
Ask, it's called Ask Bill Keegan. The Ask Bill Keegan Show. So, they personalize it a little bit more, which is fine. All right? So, that's all I have and still lots going on. So, okay. Thanks, Bill.
Can I just make, let me suggest that Dave, the newest member of the Selectmen, you should take an opportunity to visit the stadium during an event. You could go with the police, you could go with the fire and get a tour and it's very interesting.
It's very interesting, yeah. It's very interesting and I'm looking forward to it, actually, seeing an actual operation. And by the way, I will be having guests on my show, so be surprised, don't be surprised if you get a phone call about getting, being a guest on the show and being interviewed, so just be aware of that. I may actually have all five of you at one different times throughout the year, just to kind of, so people know a little bit about you and all about the things you're working on as well individually. So, I think that's important as well. I'll be having department heads and different department operations in as well.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So, now, town managers' goals and objectives.
Yes, the, I took a stab at just creating a list of issues that I know have been worked on over the past year. I added a few to the list as well. And I just want to take the opportunity for the board to provide feedback of additional items that you'd like to add or to substitute other items out that you don't think are as important. And then we'll start adding to some of the measurements to them as well.
One thing, Bill, is, you know, this is a, it's a list, it's a fairly extensive list, but is there any way that you could prioritize them or maybe we can help you prioritize them?
I think that's fine, too. I, you know, I don't know which things are important to all of you, so it's important for me to hear from you on those points. So, I mean, they're all important in some way, shape, or form, but they, and, you know, they're not maybe all achievable in one year, but certainly...
That's my point.
Yeah.
Last year, we ranked them in order, you know, five being the most important, one the least important, and just put that all on a spreadsheet and just numerically prioritize them that way. So, if we want to do that again, we could set this up on a spreadsheet and...
The one thing I did do was, because I think it's important, I just created categories this year. First is infrastructure improvements. Second was planning and economic development. The third was personnel labor relations. D was facility maintenance and construction. E was financial management. F was regional services. G was budget planning. And H, H was community relations. And I was sustainable practices. So, that we could, those are the main categories that we would typically deal with throughout the year. And obviously, there'll be different weights placed upon those based upon a number of issues that you feel are important throughout the year. And this list will change. We know that's going to happen because this is a dynamic world that we live in. Things will become more important throughout the year as what, things will take on a different life of their own throughout the year because that's just what typically happens. But at least, the sooner I can get this prioritized, I'll start working with my department heads to help, you know, meet some of this work out and we can start, you know, getting some of these things identified.
Super. Bill, in your facility maintenance and construction, you have developed a comprehensive facility maintenance program.
Mm-hmm.
Does that include establishing a town-wide facilities department?
Yes, that's right. We've already had some initial discussions about that.
Okay.
I think that's a critical thing that we should do. I mean, I think if we're, if we're going to get out of the support of the community around building a new facility, I think part of that equation has to be that we're going to, we have a plan for maintaining it as well.
That's the only one I circled.
Yeah. We've been talking about this for 20 years.
Yeah.
Bill, I mean, that's literally the one that I circled.
Yeah.
Early on, when I met with you, I put you on the spot, but can you share the way that you developed this comprehensive facility maintenance plan in Dedham? Because I thought that has some merit.
Yeah, sure. We actually did that in Dedham. What happened was that the timing was right and, you know, like we say in this business a lot, sometimes you'd rather be lucky than good. But the timing was right in the sense that both the school facility person, and we had a part-time facility person on the town side, both retired at the same time. They're both, one left for a job and the other retired. So, what we did was we pooled the resources of both the town and school to hire one facility director. And then a lot of the school maintenance operations had already been established. We did actually hire some additional, some additional staff to do, we needed an HVAC expert. We didn't have one, so we went and we got one. And we had, well, we already had an electrician, we had, we had a plumber on staff, we had, we had a carpenter on staff. So, we were able to do those kinds of things so that when something breaks, it's one phone call. You know, you make the phone call to facility maintenance, they take care of it and they make the improvement. Now, what's also improved is that we were able to centralize all the costs for electricity, for our oil, for our heat. We put every building on a schedule so that we knew exactly when those buildings were going to be and when the roof was going to come up, when the parking lot was going to be repaired, the windows are going to be replaced, the floors are going to be, you know, redone, recopded, repainted, all those things that go with that. The key thing in this whole discussion was that we didn't want department managers running the buildings. We wanted them to be running their operations and not being concerned about if something breaks in the bathroom or something, or if they get a leak in the roof, that they have to, you know, run around trying to, trying to figure out who's going to fix it. I have to tell you that my life changed overnight when this happened. I mean, it was amazing. I called, made one phone call. My heating system broke one day. Within 20 minutes, I had somebody there to fix it. And it was fixed within 30 minutes. It just, you know, that's the way it's supposed to be. People should not have to, department managers should not have to worry about their buildings being maintained. And they take care of that. That central facility maintenance director will be responsible for taking care of all the cleaning responsibilities. We never quite got to the point, but we're well on the track of centralizing all the custodial staffs, so having one contract for all those things. And what I mean, I mean, one labor contract, so you didn't have multiple labor contracts, you know, overlapping each other. We, you know, some of the sources could be outsourced because, you know, it made sense to do that versus having staff do them. So, all those things, you can't even look at those things until you have the staff and the ability, capability in place in order to do that. So, it's something that I've already had some conversations with the school business manager and the finance director about tackling over the next year, and we're looking to do that.
Bill, did you, how did you fund these? Did you set aside monies so that if a roof needed to be replaced, the money was there on the scheduled date?
Right. What we did was, what the facility operation, the facility director would actually submit a capital plan every year. And he would go down the list of buildings and he'd go through each building each year and say, "Okay, we need to do this for this building." manager and the finance director about, about tackling over the next year, and we're looking to do that.
Bill, did you, how did you fund these? Did you, did you set aside monies so that if a roof needed to be replaced, the money was there on the scheduled date?
Right. What we did was, what the facility operation, the facility director would actually submit a capital plan every year. And he would go down the list of buildings. And, and he'd go through each, each building each year and say, okay, we need to do this for this building. And we already had, he already had a list of what he wanted to do.
So if you've got a 35, a 30-year roof, in the 29th year, you're planning to put that?
Yeah, you're planning, that roof's gonna come up for funding. It's gonna be on the list.
Yeah. You have to, you have to put together a capital needs assessment.
Yeah, these, these are things we've talked about forever and we've never been able to pull together in a cohesive plan.
And I will tell you, what happens is that your building is much better maintained, your, your, you know, the, 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 the public actually gains confidence in wanting to fund building improvements because they know that we're properly maintaining them. Nothing irritates me, nothing more than, and I'm sure it irritates a lot of residents too, that if we don't maintain what we got, that we shouldn't be given the ability to go build something new. So I, when, when we take care of that piece, I think the two go hand in hand. And I think people, I mean, the residents and the community and taxpayers will have a lot more, a lot more confidence in doing that. So.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any other questions, Bill? So do you want us to take that type of approach in terms of trying to prioritize, you know, some of these items for you?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the proper process for doing that is. I mean, it's difficult to do it in an environment like this tonight, but maybe if you have, maybe each of you ranked them?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we did last, last year, past couple of years. We've all submitted ranks.
Okay.
Usually, I would compile them into a spreadsheet and then bring it to the next meeting and.
That's fine. We can, we can help you with the spreadsheet too.
Okay, so maybe if everybody could just send the ranking to you, Bill? Does that?
Take a look at last year's because it was, it was a little bit more specific than this.
What I'm concerned about is over the last couple of years, and granted, it was a different town manager, we came up with six or seven pages of categories and spreadsheets. And then it got to the point where we were supposed to get an update every month, and then it went six months, and then it was the day before six months, we'd get something thrown at us. And we ended up more focusing on the matrix than the reality of what we needed to do. And the list kept, you know, each selectman thought that they had a great idea, it went on the list. And then you get something that was unmanageable. And I think it was a complete breakdown last time, so I just don't want to go down that same path of, you know, asking him to rank it different ways. I think from your experience in working with the department heads, you could actually come back to us and say, from your experience working with the DPW and the Rec Department and Conservation, this is what you're hearing firsthand, and this is what you think needs to be prioritized.
Right, but this ranking is for us to give Bill some direction on what's important from our perspective.
But I, what I'm saying, I think it needs to come the other way around. I think we've already tried that. And granted, it's a different town manager, but I'd like to hear from you what your thoughts are, having been here for a few weeks and even wait a couple of months, and then say, this is what you think the priority is.
Well, it's an interesting, interesting approach. I, I've not done it that way as well, but it's actually interesting to me because, you know, who knows better what, what's actually on the operational level, what needs to be, what actually can be accomplished versus that which we're gonna have to take a longer term view of. So I think if we are able to, if I, if say, this is, this is a list that I've developed, I've shared it with the board, but they've asked me to go back and actually ask you all what you think the, the ranking should be. What do you think we can, what do you think we can do with this? And then get some feedback from them, and then I bring it back to you.
Yeah, I think otherwise, you're just gonna get five different sets of priorities. And what happened last time was the economy dumped. So all of a sudden, you know, remember when Larry Harrington was doing, it's all right, we're gonna save on insurance, now's a chance to renegotiate contracts. So it changed overnight. And then we had power outages, and then it was something else. So, you know, if we come back to this matrix that we have, it falls apart pretty quickly.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jim and I understand his approach and I'm looking at you as yet, we have hired you as the professional. So I would, I would say every, everything that's on the list is.
They're all important issues.
Do what you're gonna, yeah, what you're gonna do.
No question about it. And I, I appreciate you saying that. I think it really does require us to come back and say, okay, this is achievable over the, and maybe set some timeframes as to what can be done because we know we're gonna fix roads this year, we know we're gonna fix sewer systems this year, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna try to implement the new sewer plant this year or the upcoming year. There's a lot, lot to be done, but it's, I'd like to understand that a little bit better too, from there. It's probably, it'll be education for you as well in this process, so.
So about how much time do you think you'd need to?
My next department head meeting's coming up in two weeks, so I should be able to, maybe less than that. I'll, I don't want to say it should be the next meeting, but the meeting after that probably. So two meetings from now, we should be able to come back with something.
Great.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, so on to action items. Ginny, do you want to run through them?
Yeah, and with the permission of the board, last, last week, when we were doing Bill's appointments, we suggested that we bundled, bundled everything. And then, Bill, you suggested that the town at Dedham, what you did is you bundled all the action items in one day. And I would like permission from the board just to go back the way we used to do it, so that each item, I think, deserves its, its own discussion and its own vote. I mean, so if, if, do you guys mind that?
Yeah, I'm actually in favor of doing it that way. I know it takes a little bit more time, but we do like to personalize things when it's appropriate.
Right, okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
It's your, it's your agenda.
Okay, the first item is a founder, for the Founder's Day Committee, they were asking permission for a collection of donations for fireworks. And this was done, this was scheduled for Saturday. And the application was received on March 20th, but we didn't get it in our packet until today. The, it's already occurred. And I just have a question why the, with permission of the board, I just had a question on how come the application was on March 20th, submitted on March 20th, and we get it after the, after the event had occurred. I just would like to be more cognizant of applications and so that we can approve them in a timely fashion rather than after the fact. I know the board agrees with that.
Ginny, when was the application received?
The date is March 20th, 2014.
Well, Bill, most towns, when there's an application, it's date stamped with a clerk that has a specific day and minute.
Right.
We just typically don't do that. That would, you know, just because it says March 20th, that's when he penciled it, maybe it didn't get into later. No, we have no way of.
Right. I, but I don't think they delivered it Friday.
Oh, yeah.
So if we could be more cognizant of the things that are coming in, that would be good.
No question about it.
Do we have to, do we have to vote on this?
So they already did.
It's already passed.
Fait accompli, it's done.
Okay.
It's already finished.
Okay, forget that. The next item is two donations from, to the Recreation Committee. I'll bundle these. The first one was a check for $2,000 from St. Albans Masonic Angel Fund, and it's to be used for the Foxborough children in need to attend Booth's summer program. And the next donation is to the Recreation Fund and a check for $100 for the Moms Club of Foxborough. And this is for the Recreation Department. So I make a motion that we approve the receipt of these two donations to the Recreation Department.
I'll second that, Ginny.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna recuse myself from, on that one.
Okay, cool. So 4-0-1.
Yeah. And I have to recuse myself on the next one?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept a donation from Ginny Capola of $100 for the restoration of the Civil War Soldier statue. And Ginny, thank you very much, and I hope there's other citizens that are equally as generous. And the, oh, the recipient will be the Foxborough Historic Commissioner.
Get a second on that?
I'll second that. Thank you, Ginny.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The third one is a letter of, a move that we accept a letter of resignation from Bill Norwood of the Council on Aging and Human Services. And for personal reasons, he's, he's stepping down from the board, and I'd like to thank him for his service in the past years.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. The next one is approving the minutes from February 7, April 17th, April 22nd, April 29th, and May 6th.
No comments.
None from me.
I just have on page two for the, under the Southeastern Regional District, oh, I'm sorry, on the April 22nd, the name, Steve's name is spelled U-D-D-E-N. Yeah, that's the right thing. So I make a, can I make a motion? Make a motion that we accept the minutes as amended from April 17th, April 22nd, April 29th, and May 6th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. The next item is, I make a motion to approve the change of name in Dimitri, from Dimitri's, was it, DNN Corporation wants to change the name to Dimitri's Red Snapper in Dimitri's from Green Valley?
DNN Corporation, DBA, Green Valley.
Green Valley, right.
Right.
And just, just a quick one, I actually spoke to him when I was in there for dinner or a function, and Red Snapper, and the only reason is to get people that might not just eat steak to think there's other things and kind of bring more people in there. So it's, this is a good thing for them.
This is actually the original name.
Yeah, going back to what it was.
Yeah. Okay, I make a motion to approve that change?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. The next one is a letter from the Foxborough, from, it was from Bob Mader, he's with the Lions Club. But anyway, it's a, it's a letter inviting the Board of Selectmen and all the townspeople to a dedication of the bandstand at Foxborough Common to become the Bodich Bandstand. And this will be on Saturday, May 31st at 2:00 PM. The, Mr. Mader had come before the board earlier and a few months ago and announced that they were going to do this. And now this is the invitation for the dedication.
Just, just a quick note on that, and I'm sorry if I'm talking too much at these meetings. The J.C.'s spent quite a bit of time two weekends ago, they put the call out, and I won't mention their names because most of the people in the J.C. kind of do it quietly, but they sanded and they cleaned and they painted pretty much all day out there. So then the reason being, I think they do it every year, but more so, they wanted something really nice when the name change comes in the dedication. So there's a lot of work that went in by the J.C.'s.
So this is actually J.C.'s project. I know Bob's in the Lions Club, that's why I was, Lions Club came to my mind, but is it a combination?
The renaming is not a J.C.'s, but the bandstand and the maintenance every year is, the J.C.'s are the ones that keep it up.
Right, yeah. And thank you to the J.C.'s.
Can anyone attend?
Um, it's, most likely I'll be there. Because I know, I know Peter Bodich and I, I know his family.
Okay, we don't have to have a motion to it? Nope, okay. The next thing is two donations to the Boydin Library. We have a donation for $100 for the purchase of materials for the Children's Department, and this is from the Moms Club of Foxborough. The second one is a donation of $250 for the renewal of Eastern Children's Museum Library Pass, and this is donated by the Foxborough J.C.'s. So I make a motion that we approve both donations to the Boydin Library.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye, thank you. The next is a Hackney license application for Tony Saliba. It'll be, he'll be working for Hello Foxborough Taxi. This is a renew, a new application. Make a motion that we approve the Hackney license application.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
And just under discussion, was it last year that we decided we were not gonna accept any more new applications, or am I mistaken?
Was it for taxi companies?
This is for a driver?
Taxi companies.
It's on taxi companies.
Right.
Yeah.
Because they're using Foxborough as a licensed base, but really not operating here.
Correct, so this is an existing company, new driver?
Right.
Gotcha, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye. The next is a Veteran Service Advisory Committee appointment. I make a, I move that we appoint Charles J. Button of 801 Coacassett Street to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. The next is the appointment of Mildred S. Green to the Council on Aging and Human This is, this appointment is, I have a letter from Ian Alabrandy of Council on Aging and Human Services, and Ms. Green would be replacing Jerry Norwood, who just retired from the, from the committee.
I'll second that with gratitude.
All those in favor?
The next one is an appointment of Kevin Coughlin of 21 Young Road to the Stadium Advisory Committee. It was request, there was a letter attached requesting this committee nomination by George Bell, Mike Asha, Ron Hodgson, Joel Angelico, and other members.
I'll take that as a motion and second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. I have another, okay. And the next is a application for coin, two coin-operated pool table licenses for America's Best Value Inn at 105 Washington Street. I make a motion, we approve that?
Is that what Agnes Corporation is?
I guess so.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. That's it? Those are all the action items.
Thank you. The last items are in our information packet, they're notices from the planning board and 2013, the past agenda items. This is the layout of just the regularly occurring events and just kind of shows you where, you know, the different items for budget discussion, for example, or where we start hearing about concerts, things like that. Commercial parking lot licenses, reviewing for town meetings. So this is just here for your information as we request agenda items going forward.
Now, the last item was from David Elias, and actually I met him or saw him at the Foxborough Cleanup Day. He's asking for a streetlight down by the railroad tracks on North Street. Bill, how would you prefer when residents come and say, we think we need a streetlight, formal letter to the selectmen, or can they go to the DPW and you?
They can request a letter to the selectmen and then just, I'll, I'll handle it. We'll just, and they'll just note to the board that we're, we'll, we'll investigate it.
Okay, so we don't need to follow up with, it'll come?
No, and I'll, and I'll take care of it, and if it comes in, I'll, I'll deal with it.
Okay.
So you, you got a copy of this letter?
Yeah, please, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, I think that's it for tonight, so if I can have a motion to adjourn?